We're going to start with the agenda review session. Okay, we have no ordinance on second reading. Ordinance on first reading, we got ordinance oh one. An ordinance to adopt the New Brunswick Cultural Center redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Ordinance oh two. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Sixten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section Ten dot sixteen, oh five oh, Schedule twenty-nine, time limit parking, reference to Union Street. Ordinance oh three. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Ten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section Ten dot sixteen dot uh, uh, zero twenty, Schedule twenty-four, no parking anytime, reference to Wilcox Road. Then we got resolutions. Resolution thirty. Approve agenda amendments. Resolution thirty-one, approve payroll. Resolution thirty-two, approve refund for redeeming tax sales certificates. Resolution thirty-three. Uh, authorize establishment and petty cash accounts for various departments. Thirty-four. Authorize professional service agreement, William J. Hamilton Jr., special counsel, for two thousand seventeen, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, fair and open. Thirty-five. Uh, authorize professional service, service agreement, Charlie Gaden, Ex-Squire Assistant City Attorney, for two thousand seventeen, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, uh, fair and open. Uh, resolution thirty-six. Authorize professional service agreement with Bach-Zucker Hatfield LLC, two thousand seventeen, Labor Council, twenty-five thou- not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, fair and open. Thirty-seven. Authorize professional service agreement with Hoblen-Longo Moran-Dunkus LLP for two thousand seventeen, Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Division of Assessments, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, fair and open. Number nine. Authorize professional service agreement with D. Francesco Bateman-Coley, Yospin-Cunsman-Davis, Lyra-Flong PC for two thousand seventeen, Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Conflit, Division of Assessments, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, fair and open. Number ten. Authorize professional service agreement with BRP Valuation and Consulting Services for two thousand seventeen, Real Property Appraisal and Services for Tax Appeals, Division of Assessments, thirty thousand dollars, fair and open. Eleven. Excuse me. Oh, forty. I skipped one? Okay. All right. Uh, forty. Authorize professional service agreement with appraisal system, two thousand seventeen, Property Inspection Services, Division of Assessments, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, fair and open. Forty-one. Authorize professional service agreement, Civil Solutions, Division of Adams-Rehman-Hagan Associates, Incorporated, for two thousand seventeen, Tax Map Maintenance and Just Maintenance Services, Division of Assessments, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Uh, forty-two. Uh, forty-two. Authorize professional service agreement with Spatial Data Logic Incorporated, two thousand seventeen, Municipal Software, Just GS Open Program and Technical Support, Division of Assessments, not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars, fair and open. Fourteen. Authorize professional service agreement with U.S. Healthworks Medical Groups of New Jersey, PC, for two thousand seventeen, Physician Services, not to exceed thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, fair and open. Forty-four. Authorize professional service agreement with First Bike Corporation for two thousand seventeen, Tax and Water Sewage Billing Collection Software and Maintenance Software Support Service, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty, forty dollars, five hundred and forty dollars, fair and open. Forty-five. Authorize professional service agreement with McDonald, with Mot-McDonald's Group Incorporated, doing business as Mot-McDonald LLC, for two thousand seventeen, Engineering and Support Services from York Water Utility, not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, fair and open. Seventeen. Award Professional Service Agreement with Remington, Vernick, and Vena for two thousand seventeen, Engineering Site Inspections for Approved Room Site Plans, funded by Estro, fair and open. Eighteen. Authorize. Forty-eight. Oh, forty-seven. I'm sorry. Yeah. All right. Forty-seven. Authorize professional service agreement, uh, with Wilks-Goldman and Spitzer for two thousand seventeen, Bond Counsel, amount thirty thousand dollars, fair and open. Forty-eight. Authorize professional service agreement, Samuel Klein and Company for two thousand seventeen, Municipal Auditor, not to exceed a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, fair and open. Forty-nine. Advising Consent to Municipal Prosecutors and Municipal Public Defender Appointments. Municipal Prosecutors, names Robert Goodwin, Robert Adocio, Adocio, Mark Centron, Municipal Public Defender James Harden, expires December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, one year. Fifty. Authorize professional service agreement with Vital Communications Incorporated for Tax Assessment, Computer Program and Technical Support and Associated Printing, Binding, and Mailing Services, Division of Assessment, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, fair and open. Fifty-one. Approve Relaxation of the Noise Ordinance, requested by Langen Engineering, Reason for Site Contracting to Perform Utility Work in French Street for Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Healthcare, Health, Health Corps Project, dates Monday through Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, February second, two thousand seventeen, from eight P.M. to six A.M. Saturdays, February fourth and eleventh, from two thousand seventeen, from eight A.M. to six P.M. Fifty-two. Approve the Amendment of Resolution R dash one twenty-one six six seven, Change Order Number Six, with Flankins Contracting Group Incorporated for Construction of Recreation Park, specification eight five one fourteen R, amount twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Approval of this change will not, will not constitute an increase of twenty, twenty percent of more of the original contract. Fifty-three. Authorize application and acceptance of grant with Middlesex County for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, New Brunswick Alliance on Substance Abuse Prevention, uh, Substance Abuse Prevention, Cash Match, uh, eight thousand five hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents, grant thirty-four thousand, uh, thirty, thirty-four thousand and thirty-four dollars. Uh, okay. Uh, fifty-four. Approve Request for City Property, requested by Community Options Incorporated. Cupids Chase Five K Run, Location Bubba La Park and Pavilion, for Cupids Chase National Five K Race, Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand seventeen, six A.M. to one P.M. Pavilion, eight A.M. to ten P., ten A.M. Track Police Extra Duty. Fifty-five. Uh, yeah, fifty-five. Approve Request for Use of City Property and Closure of Streets, requested by CGI Racing, Location Bubba La Park Seminary Place for George Street and College Avenue for Eighth Annual United Half Marathon, Eight K Race, Date and Time Sunday, April ninth, two thousand seventeen, from five A.M. to twelve P.M. Park Usage, Date and Time Saturday, April eighth, two thousand seventeen, Sunday, April ninth, two thousand seventeen, from eight A.M. to four P.M. Seminary Place Street Closure, Date and Time Sunday, April ninth, two thousand seventeen, from seven A.M. to twelve P.M., uh, George Street Closure, Date and Time Sunday, April ninth, two thousand seventeen, from six A.M. to two P.M. College Avenue Closure, Police Extra Duty. Fifty-six. Approve Amendment of the Resolution, Reason to Pay Legal Fees in Amount of nineteen thousand sixty-four dollars and eighty cents to Department Law Firm LLC for Special Counsel, City of New Brunswick, at, uh, Ashport-Marwick, Construction Corporation, from two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, eighty-one cents, to two hundred and twenty-seven thou- two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Fifty-seven. Approve Request for City Property Sidewalk Only, Request by Islamic Circle of North America for Sidewalk on French Street outside of the World Memorial Park for Distribution of Winter Clothing, Children and Adults, Blankets, Pre-Placidous Juices, Toothbrushes, Sunday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, Rain Day, Saturday, February fourth, two thousand seventeen, Time nine A.M. to eight P.M. Fifty-eight. Authorize Professional Service Agreement to Phoenix Advisors LLC for two thousand seventeen, Continual Disclosure Agent Services and Independent Registered Municipal Advisor as Required by Securities and Exchange Commission, Term twelve-month period commencing January first, two thousand seventeen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars, non-pro-tum. Fifty-nine. Approve Resolution, Authorizing Acceptance and Execution of two thousand seventeen Arts Regrant Agreement with, with County of Middlesex Office of Culture and Heritage for Art at City Council, Amount to Receive one thousand nine hundred dollars. Sixty. Approve Emergency Temporary Appropriations for two thousand seventeen. Sixty-one. Approve Transfer of Appropriation and Reserves for two thousand sixteen Municipal Budget. Sixty-two. Approve Request for Street Closing, requested by New Labor Education Training Institute. Location Begin at two twenty-two Livingston Avenue, Sanford Street, Joyce Kimbrough Avenue, Jeff Street, Townley Street, Prince Street, uh, Patterson Street, Spring Street, Church Street, George Street, to End at two twenty-two Livingston Avenue, for March Commemorating Workers Memorial Day. Date Sunday, April twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, Time, two P.M. to three P.M., Police Extra Duty. Sixty-three. Authorize Professional Service Agreement to Bridgewater Veterinary Hospital for Veterinary Services for K-9 Unit for, to the Police Department, Term twelve-month period commencing January first, two thousand seventeen, and Ending to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, not to exceed three thousand seven hundred and seven dollars, sixty-eight cents, non-pro-tum. Sixty-four. Approve the Amendment of Resolution R dash one 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 six four one, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents to Arleiro and Donahue LLC for Representation, Representation of Mayor James Cahill in Matter of Stephen Middleton versus the Ci- versus the City of New Brunswick et al., Arthur Anderson et al., versus the City of New Brunswick on Punitive Damages and Claims from seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to forty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Right, we're sixty-five, correct? Yeah. Sixty-five. Approve, Approve of Contract with the Plymouth Environmental Company Incorporated for Asbestos Abatement for the Water Utility, specification number five thirty-sixteen W, not to exceed sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Sixty-six. Approve the Awarded Contract with Rehab Pacific Company, Furnish and Deliver Recycling and Traps, Rollout Containers for the Department of Public Works, Works, specification five seventy-sixteen P, not to exceed twenty-nine thousand two hundred and two dollars and sixty cents. Sixty-seven. Authorize Execution and Acceptance of Grant for the New Jersey Department of Transportation and Highway Safety Fund Grant Program for two thousand sixteen, for Safe Corridor Program, uh, Fund Grant. Sixty-eight. Approve the Amendment of Resolution R dash zero nine one six seven two, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, to Lawrence Benham and Exquire for Detectives Christopher Bornheimer in Matter of Rodriguez versus the City of New Brunswick et al., twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars, to, to thirty thousand sixty-four, six, thirty, thirty thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Sixty-nine. Authorize the Tax Collector's Counsel Certificate sixteen dash zero four two-two against Block five oh eight, Lot zero two-two, sixty-four Mitchell Avenue, Refund U.S. Bank as Custodian for the Tower DB, DBW, uh, six, a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Seventy. Approve Awarded Contract with the S. Reed Incorporated Maintenance and Support Contract for the Proprietarian, Proprietary Software for Just Development, Software Applications for the Division of Assessment, Term twelve-month period commencing September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, Ending September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, not to exceed three thousand dollars. Seventy-one. Approve the Resolution, Authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to Execute Discharge of a Lean of Document related to the Expired Leans for the City Home, Cities Home and Harp and Hip Housing Real Deviation Programs. Seventy-two. Approve the Relaxation of the City Mut- City Noise Ordinance and Lane Closure, requested by Jay Sepur and Sun Trucking and Riving Company Incorporated, Reason to Place a Crane on Albany Street between George Street, Nielsen Street, Set a Generator at Johnson &amp; Johnson, Date Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand seventeen, Alternate Date Saturday, February, Saturday, February eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, Time seven A.M. to five P.M. Seventy-three. Approve the Amendment of Resolution R dash zero eight one six two nine, Change Order Number One, with Guard State Highway Products for two thousand sixteen, Furnish and Deliver Regulatory Science, specification number nine oh two that sixteen, Approve, uh, three hundred and seventy-two thousand sixty cents. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of twenty percent or more of the original contract. Seventy-four. Approve Awarded Contract with Stavola Ashport Company for Furnish and, and Deliver Bitmus, uh, Bitmanis Materials, Term twelve-month period commencing January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, Ending January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, Rebate specification, number five six six that sixteen P.R., not to exceed one hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Seventy-five. Approve the Off-Premise Raffle Fifty Fifty at the Helders Hotel and Conference Center at ten Livingston Avenue for State Theater Regional Arts Center, Dates February nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, March fourth, fifth, sixth, eleven, thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, April fourth, sixth, twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, and May thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Is that it? All right. Meeting will come to order, but Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council Member Egan.
Here.
Council Member Escobar.
Here.
Council Member Sikora Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied in that annual notice, which the sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of the City Hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, which has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the whole news. Will you be pleased with our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, municipal with a belief in justice for all.
We're just going to take a moment of silence to pause and give a moment of silence to those who have given their life defending freedom around the world, those who continue to defend freedom, that they have a safe return, and for our country. Thank you. All right. We have nothing.
Prove the minutes.
Okay. Okay, we're going to approve the minutes. We have the motions to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Sir. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Egan.
Yes.
Council Member Escobar.
Yes.
Council Member Sikora Ludwig.
Abstain.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, we have no public hearings today, we have no ordinances on second reading. So we're going to go to the ordinance on first reading. Uh, ordinance first, uh, the ordinance number one, An Ordnance to Adopt the New Brunswick, uh, Orde- to Adopt the New Brunswick Cultural Center Redevelopment Plan Area in the City of New Brunswick.
With the ordinance setting now February first, six thirty P.M., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Egan. Council Member Escobar.
Yes.
Council Member Sikora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number two. An Ordnance to Amend and Supplement the Revised General Ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title Ten Vehicles and Traffic, uh, Chapter Ten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing and Parking, Section Ten dot sixteen dot oh five oh, Schedule twenty-nine, time limit parking, reference to Union Street.
With the ordinance setting now February first, six thirty P.M., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Egan.
Yes.
Council Member Escobar.
Yes.
Council Member Sikora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. We have now ordinance number three, or, um, excuse me, oh, yeah, three. An Ordnance to Amend and Supplement the Revised General Ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title Ten Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Ten dot sixteen, Stopping and Standing, uh, Section Ten dot sixteen, zero two zero, Schedule twenty-four, No Parking at Anytime, reference to Wilcox Road.
With the ordinance setting now February first, six thirty P.M., same date to be advertised.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Egan.
Yes.
Council Member Escobar.
Yes.
Council Member Sikora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to go on to the resolutions. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the resolutions? Please remember you have five minutes. If you speak through the chair, then please speak directly to the resolutions.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradville, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today and a resident of the city. I'll start by asking about number nine, uh, is it seven thirty-eight? Uh, just think it's worth noting, this is the law firm of the county prosecutor's wife, uh, and that is a fact that the county prosecutor has not properly disclosed on his own financial disclosure form, and that's, uh, setting a bad example for the entire county, and I'll get to ethics later on in the public portion, but I do think it's worth noting that uh, as part of that contract. I have a question about number eleven, the appraisal systems. Is this a new deal with them, because they did the revow? Uh, who performed this service in two thousand sixteen, or is it the same?
Uh, sorry, uh, we have a number, you said number eleven, number forty, right?
Yes, sir.
I believe they, uh, I believe this firm provided the same service in two thousand sixteen. Um, as you can see, it's got a value of fifteen thousand dollars, though it's not a, a repeat of the revow, of course, but, um, I believe that this same company provided the inspection service last year. I don't see this as a, this is a shame of your, but.
Adopted every year.
Even, even in two thousand fifteen? You've always used this company.
I, I feel comfortable speaking in two thousand sixteen, but I can certainly look it up for you.
Okay, I'm just interested in why, why you might pick the same company that did the revow, that was, there were pros and cons to doing that.
As I am changing one bid or two, the RFP that was put out, um, for point seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. Egan, did it look, do you have something to say?
I just wanted to say the same thing, that it was fair, it was openly bid, and they won the bid.
Thank you. Uh, Mot-McDonald Engineering Services, seven forty-five, uh, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Could the Water Director speak a little bit to what they're doing for that, that large amount?
The seven forty-five?
Yes, sir.
Please, Council, this number reflects upcoming projects that we have going on this year uh, in regards to, um, work that we're doing with our THMs, um, work going along with our med and night testing and, and further, so this is what we have budget for the year.
Thank you. How long has Samuel Klein been the municipal auditor?
Which one?
Uh, seven forty-eight.
You said how long has he been the municipal auditor?
Yeah, yeah, is that, is that?
Uh, I'll speak to the twenty-four years that I've been here, they, they've been here for that, at least that long. I don't know, beyond, I don't know, you know?
Approximately, well, within years ago.
Sure, sure. So the city's very happy with their services, I take it? And Wilance, as well, has been the bond counsel for that same duration, at least, right?
Well, yes. I'm not sure about that, but.
They've all been fair and open, basically?
They are fair and open, uh, yes.
Thank you. Then the next one is Municipal Prosecutors and Public Defender Appointments. I just want to ask, is it fair to say that Mr. Beach is no longer with the city? Uh, is, what is his status?
But this, Mr. Council President, um, I'm going to answer the question very briefly, but going forward, we're not going to talk about personnel matters anymore in the city council meetings. Quite frankly, I'm quite concerned about, um, violating rights of individual employees relative to personal information disclosed, and I don't want to subject the city to any lawsuit. Um, but with respect to this particular question, Mr. Beach is back as a public defender. He's under a, a contractor management, though.
So that's a change. Okay. And when will that agreement be brought to the council?
Agreement doesn't have to be brought to council. He's authorized other new ordinance through the city attorney, similar to what Mr. Abode was doing.
Okay. And so the disciplinary matter has concluded, is that so?
Like I advised you, Mr. Cradville, we're not discussing personnel matters, and I'm not even suggesting there was a disciplinary matter, so we're not going to go there with Mr. Beach or anybody else.
I have to say that the seminar that, uh, we attend, or at least I attended last Saturday, chooses things, uh, the lawyer for the League of Municipalities indicated also uh, that personnel matters should not be discussed at city council meetings, by name at least.
The interest is to see who, who were the culprits? Who was, uh, who was speaking out of turn? Wasn't it Mr. Shammy who was?
Was that?
Was, was saying people's names who were?
Well, going forward, we're not going to discuss personnel matters anymore. What else, anything else on the resolution?
Okay, I'm just curious to, Mr. Sham.
I mean, going forward, we're not going to.
The one who was doing it.
Okay.
I'll, uh, I guess I'll look into it myself. I want to ask about the Marvak thing, is that over seven fifty-six? Uh, it's up to two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
That matter, the hearing is not concluded, and this is another bill for Mr. Palm.
Concluded, was the, did the city successful or unsuccessful?
No, no, the matter's not concluded. The hearings are concluded. Now they're in the briefing period, so.
And how long?
It's not over yet.
How long might that last? When might we get a, a decision?
Several months, I suspect.
Okay. Will the bills increase significantly over the several months, or?
Bills will continue to be submitted for council approval and payment.
Okay. Just want to learn a little bit about the requirement from the S.E.C., the bottom of page six, Phoenix Advisors, seven fifty-eight. Uh, this is something that the, the city was violating the rules of the Securities and Exchange Commission, and were required to hire this firm. I just want to know, for what duration is the city?
You said we're in the city, can you repeat that?
City is required to hire Phoenix Advisors, or something, who does that type of work, I guess, being the continuing disclosure agent. Um, and I just want to know, how long is the city required to keep hiring them? Is that something that's perpetual, forever and ever, or is it five years, or was it?
I think maybe repetitive's going to help us out.
Okay. We are obligated, as Mr. Cradville mentioned, to have a disclosure agent, and Phoenix Advisors was hired for this year. As to how many years, uh, we're going to have to do that, there's no indication that the law is going to change, so as long as the law says we have to do it, I guess we'll keep doing it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to ask about the case of, uh, at the bottom of page seven, number seven sixty-four, the mayor is getting, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars of his legal bills paid by the taxpayers for the case brought by, uh, I guess, former Lieutenant Middleton. Um, what's the status of that case, and what can we expect those legal to happen? Would those legal, there'd be a lot more of those.
We don't discuss sentencing litigation with respect to particulars, um, but the case is, uh, ongoing, so I, I would suspect you'll see continued legal submissions for council.
Okay, and, and just get a little insight into the status, it'd be in discovery, is that correct? It's in discovery still, okay. Uh, next one, seven sixty-five, asbestos abatement for the water utility. I just want to clarify, this is for both of the places, or just the one place? The triple plan and the bill?
Yes, that's for both locations.
Both locations, and that's the extent of the, the, what it's going to cost, for the whole job?
Yes, that's the, that's the extent as far as the actual removal, and then if you'll notice, uh, we had another company coming in doing air monitoring, because of one location is occupied during that, that time. So that's where the contract would take everything out.
Thank you. Could I get an update on seven sixty-eight? Lawsuit against, uh, former Detective Bornheimer in, uh, Rob- in case Victor Rodriguez?
Pending litigation.
Still pending litigation.
It's, you know, discovery, I, I believe, as well.
Okay. I guess that, I, I do want to ask about the fifth resolution overall here. William J. Hamilton being appointed for special counsel? Can, uh, the council or the law department explain, uh, his role as, uh, you know, what, what?
Special counsel.
I, I won't dispute that he's a special guy, but I would like to know what work he's performing, what his function is. Uh, are there certain cases he handles that, that, that require his expertise? Um, what, I'm just trying to get it behind the city has.
If I can, Mr. Hamilton, um, is involved in research, is involved in ordinance writing for me, he likes special resolutions, um, he provides, uh, insight, guidance with legislative matters. Um, Mr. Hamilton has a wealth of experience in the municipal law area, more years than I probably didn't quote, and, uh, he is an asset still to the city at his tender, young age.
Thank you. Well, I know he is a New Brunswick guy, um, I'm just, I guess, a little concerned about, uh, the, the role that John Lynch might still play in, in the city. Well, I, I, I mean, so, let me.
Your name out here is William Hamilton, though.
So, so when, when John Lynch was convicted of, of crimes.
Let's think, let's think.
He did. William Hamilton was one of the people who wrote a letter to Judge Chesler and asked for, for him to be lenient on John Lynch. And I just, I'm not clear on, uh, why, uh, William Hamilton is, is, uh, necessary in addition to all these other lawyers that you have hired and, and the staff of the law department, and I'm just, uh- you have hired and, and, and the staff of the law department, and I'm just-
Thank you.
Curious about his purpose here, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Hello, everyone, Teresa Vivar, from, uh, Ten Cross Street in New Brunswick, I'm just, uh, want to say thank you because of, uh, many of the programs that we have, but you know that there is a resolution that has been passed already, like the abandonment of property, and we're still waiting for the person that is gonna be in charge of those abandoned properties, Lazos Americania, we're gonna pass this.
Is this on the, is this on the res, do we need to take that to the public portion? Cause this is where we're stalling the resolutions right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, just, we're coming back to the public portion in a little-
Oh, okay.
In a couple minutes. Stay right there, let me sit down.
Real quick, um, it's kind of part of the resolution, but it's not part of the resolution. I just wanna make, uh, a comment on the response that I recently got from you guys, saying that you are no longer to discuss personnel matters because of a conference you guys went to Saturday, when I was taking-
Yeah, well, no, it's not because of the conference that we went to, it's because of, when you discuss personnel matters at any point, I mean, you could be corporate America, you could be city, it opens you up to litigation because there's certain privacy matters that people have, and people just, I mean, I know, I, I wouldn't want my personnel matter, you know, put, put in the public, so we're trying to follow, we're trying to protect, I'm trying to protect each, all parties involved, cause you never know, when, when you start discussing personnel matters, there may be allegations that come out, true or not true, and that could say someone's character, or anything to that effect, and it'll open us up to, opening up for litigation.
That's you guys.
No, no, no.
But if I come to this mic, I'm gonna say whatever I want, and you, and you're saying electorally, that you won't respond, if I was to say a personnel matter, then I feel like, I'm not responding, but, okay, I'm, this, all right.
You're fine, you can look.
Cause you're trying to handcuff.
No, no, don't handcuff, no, 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 this is two thousand seventeen, official method. Yes, any, oh, okay, anybody else on the resolutions? See you then.
So, second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council member?
Standing on fifty-two.
So noted. Council member Egan?
Yes.
Council member Escobar?
Yes.
Council member Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Standing on sixty-four, yes, for the rest.
So noted.
All right, now we're gonna move to the public portion, please come forward, you have five minutes, with mercy rule.
Thank you. Okay, I said seventy-four, thank you so much for everything that you guys do, because I know it's a hard position to be in, and I think it's difficult to run a family that are for a city or, or any Latino, it's difficult, but I think, um, as I said, there is a resolution that has been passed, and we're still waiting for the persons that is gonna work with the community on these particulars resolutions or needs, and I think it's very important for us, the community members, to get engaged with the council, with the city government, to understand exactly how we can support community members to go through the process of a customization, and I'm talking about, because I'm Mexican, I'm directing a proper organization for the last fifteen years, uh, we have been organizing community projects in New Brunswick with the support of many others, but the city has been, I think, a key, a key element in order to continue, uh, helping, uh, not only the community that's just, uh, uh, residing here in this moment, but also the future generations that are coming forward, and, and as I said, I wanna pass this, just a small, uh, letter of my intentions being here today, just for these topics, um, and as I said, we need to know who's gonna be this person, because it gets into the point for the Mexicans and Mexicans in New Brunswick, more than fifteen thousand Mexicans are residing here, and, and I think it's a moment that Lazos Americania, which is a nonprofit that I run, has an office and has a home, so, but, because, um, we want to use the money that we have to fix a property, instead of just, you know, purchase something else that is expensive, we want to work with this person, but we waiting for, for last year, and nobody else has been there, um, talking about housing again, I think we, there is other departments within the city that has to work with community members, or that we paying high, high prices in, in terms of rent, but we receiving a very bad shape houses in exchange, and I think we have to work, I think I said a lot when I was here, we have to work together to ensure that, no, that if this is fair for residents, for tenants, and also for neighbors, and, and also because the city has been immersed with many, uh, flats, per se, bed bags, rats, etc., garages, etc., and I think it depends on all of us to make sure that these houses are in good shape for the well-being of, of all the city, as well as, as when I say, there is departments that are working with, for example, the city market and other, other, uh, organizations, per se, that were very close with the city, that are receiving certain support, but not necessarily actually the same support for Mexican businesses or Latino businesses, and, and I think we have to work and change that image, many, many, um, uh, by looking homes, affordable homes, uh, to, to supply the needs of the community, with the recent fires, which a majority of the people living there were Mexicans, we had, uh, no emergency response team to, to support them, and, and I think it's very important for us, I'd say, to get a place where we can support what community needs, we understand again, that is a, is a teamwork, and it will take time, but at some point, we have to work together and realize that this community exists, and we also contributing economically and many other ways to the development of this city. Many corporations has been building homes lately, thinking that this is gonna be, like I said, um, we, New Brunswick is one of the cities that has more homeless, or people that is gonna become homeless, we need more affordable, affordable housing, but instead I see a lot of buildings being developed, but we cannot afford the rents of those spaces, so therefore, we contribute to the same, uh, hard situation, the hardship lives of our community members, the ones that we are supposed to support and care and we represent. So I'm asking, again, for the last twenty years, that I'm living, more than twenty years I've been here, I think it's important for any government, any place, to recognize the, not only to understand the data of the population based on the census again, but also how we can support the community needs, and, and, and I think there is an organization that is out there, work with these organizations, but not just with those that I live with you, only because they say something nice, or because they are part of the same, um, network, per se, but I wish to those that are not, and make them part of these different groups, because the majority of the, the meetings that I'm being there, is always the same group of people managing and controlling the outcomes of any, any economic resource that the city has, and I think it's not proper, I just wanna say that, I'm sorry, but if, um, as I said, I want just really to move forward, and please come with us, again, as Americania, just with my information there, and, and let us know how we can continue working on this, this, the lady part, the last part that I wanna say, is that we have to, I think that the police department is here, please work with us, you will have a police team, like community, uh, police community team, when they go to these meetings, and I'm being, cause again, to many meetings, um, they're supposed to do a follow-ups on these, uh, community meetings, and we always complain about the security issues and traffic, and the last issue that we have with Christian Jimenez, he was, he was in coma, he's, he's still in, 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 per se, in, in transition of being out of coma, but, um, it took one life, or child, to be in that situation, for order, for, for the city to take the, to mark the walk path, and, and when we read the police report about the incident, it was very poor report, and, and didn't even, did the police who, who did this, uh, made this report, it looks like it didn't took the time to really investigate what happened.
Okay, um, I don't know, that was, but, we're gonna take, I promise you, we're willing to take everything in advisement, and, you know, I don't, I didn't, I advance you another minute, you know, but we will, we'll talk, like I said, we'll, we're gonna meet, we're gonna talk.
But I just wanna give Teresa, um, I know Teresa Vivar, and I know the work that she does in the community, but it's also, uh, she's, you know, there are some segments, you know, that, I think that is, it's fair to say that, uh, the city and all the organizations have been very proactive in helping everybody in the community, especially the, the Latino community, and it's everything, and some of the changes that happened, and some of the new organizations that we had, it was because of the community who came out and organized to be able to bring those issues forward and support them, so, um, so there is people out there that are working, uh, with the community, there's still much more, I'm not saying that it's, you know, all the work is done, there's always room for improvement and for more work, but if there are things going on in the city supporting, uh, uh, the Latino community, with the same with the fire victims, even though maybe there was not a place that they could go, but the, the city was there, the fire department was there, the, uh, the team center was full of things that they, they got together for the families, I know the school system did too, so the family got a lot of support. If I had not been from a specific, uh, uh, Latin organization, but they did have, um, they got support, but I understand that it's good to have a centralized place and maybe coordinate, um, some of the efforts that is always good to do, and in terms of the, uh, about the kid, uh, Christian Jimenez, uh, I know firsthand that, uh, and I'm not talking about the, the police report or anything, as I was saying, but I know for a fact that the police has been very helpful to that family, the same thing as the hospital, because they had met with them at the school, they had answered any questions that they have, cause I know, because I have been involved in it, so, and I know that the family is getting as much, uh, uh, information as they are able to provide, and, um, in terms of the investigation, I don't know, but I know that they have been there for the family, the same thing as the school, the Quaker, uh, East Shaw School, the same thing as, uh, Robo Duvern Apartments, I just wanna say that, but there is still, there's much more that we can do together, absolutely. Last, I think that's right, that I wanna say, I think I appreciate the, the response, but I think it's one, and as always, one thing is that certain group believes, the only thing is that we have to face they, and I think that's when the, the issue is about how we wanna find the ways to work together to ensure that, because we don't have to wait for another child to be injured, to say, because we had many meetings before the incident happened, that would help to prevent this incident, but it didn't happen, did nobody do the follow-up, so that's what I wanna say, but also, about when you mentioned, uh, Conto Rebecca, the, the issue of Christian Jimenez family, the information that you provide today is, not say everything, but the most, is not the same thing that the family has been saying, I met with them yesterday, and I'm with the family lately, so, I'm just saying that we have to, it's a work, not all of the council, but all of us, to ensure that the, 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 the government, the money, because again, many people, what they, it's gonna come again into, um, uh, how we protect our citizens, how we serve our citizens, and you mentioned, and you opened the, 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 this meeting with a pledge, right, so let's make sure that this place is fair for all of us, and not only we represent certain corporations, because that's what it looks sometimes, and I think it's important for us to change that, thank you.
Thank you. This is a reminder, when we come up to the microphone, if you hear the, the bell off, I, I am going to extend a few seconds afterwards, but that's just like people within the framework, and I don't want to cut anybody off. All right.
And thank you, I'm just trying to get myself together, get ready for my speech due to where I just seen my neighbor get stabbed in a driveway, uh, but, oh, okay, uh, my thing that I'm here for something a little different today, that's why I would like to ask, to ask the captain, after you see so many drug overdoses in a certain, in a certain area, uh, do they put out an investigation, try to see what's really going on after, like I said, so many overdoses in, in, in a location?
Wait, by location, are you meaning in a geographic location, or in a building?
Uh, in, in, for instance, French Street.
Okay.
Now, if you have so many overdoses in, what, given six months, what, uh, does the police department or detectives step up to do an investigation?
I mean, do, do we, okay, I just wanna frame the question, an investigation into-
Who's sell, who's selling this drug?
Who's selling?
To try to see who's selling this, put a watch on to see who's selling this drug.
Okay, move on.
Yes.
Yes, oh, you said yes.
So, uh, when, when you said the last time that it, it's been done?
It's, it's done on a constant basis, when we see a trend in overdose, we do investigations, you know, and try to determine who, who's, uh, selling the narcotics, I'm not gonna discuss any specific narcotic investigation.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna say any specific-
It's not on a, on a purely basis, there, there's a pattern that we see, we investigate.
Because, yes, I will say, and within the past six months, where at least four, four cases of overdose, and within the past six months, where there's been at least four pickups in the same area from this, this drug.
Did you, okay, um, yes.
Just wanna, cause I, Ms. Moore said that someone was stabbed, I just wanna hear where, where the person stands at.
Well, okay, we'll get back to that next one.
That is why, cause I think, what address are we talking about?
That was Rocker Street, right in front of me, right in front of me.
The woman, the girl there, she was a juvenile, she fell through a window, she was not stabbed, she was intoxicated and fell through a window, there was no stabbing on Rocker Street. It happened about an hour ago.
Well, okay, that's what you see, that's what you said, and that's what they, they said, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing with you over that, no, no, okay, I'm just saying, but, okay, getting back to what I was saying, so you keep track of how many pickups that you have in one area, and then you do an investigation that's going on?
If you, if you have a certain amount, you see a-
If we can identify a trend, we investigate it earlier to see if we can find out who's selling the narcotics, yes.
Because I said, wow, within French Street, and the time due to where, I know you can't stop a person from doing what they wanna do, but, oh my, seeing so many deaths and pickup in the one area, yes, I think it's time for something to be done.
Just some personal observation, about me, this, right now, like, all across America right now, I already told you, I said before, we've always had opiate addiction, opiate overdoses, and heroin overdoses, if somebody, it depends on how we treat it, because if somebody is going to, they wanna get it, they don't have to go to a specific geographic area, because right now, I work in Hamilton Township, and we have an overabundance of people overdosing from heroin, they're not investigating in Hamilton Township right now, they're thinking that people are going from Hamilton Township to Trenton and pick it up, and then bringing it back to Hamilton Township, you know, and it's tough to say what area, you know, because, because people in the specific area, you know, targeted people in the specific area, is doing it and stuff like that, you never, you don't know where they're picking it up from, I mean, that we, it's like, I know they're changing, I'm glad what the cops are doing, where they're saying, okay, let's investigate in this area, but I don't know if it's necessarily that one area where they, you know what I'm saying, where, because there's a lot of overdoses in that area, we don't know.
Well, I, did I'm just speaking of, I'm not gonna mention any, any locations or anything, but I just think that it's time for the police department detectives to really look into that area, due to where, like I said, a few, just buried another one, that was this, uh, past week from same area, same situation, but, okay, also my, my next question, that's for, uh, Mr. Jones, that's where I know-
Oh, you-
Oh, okay, sorry, okay, that's where I would like to ask him, I know he's a very good, uh, connection with the Board of Education, and he's part of the Traffic Authority, if he can speak up to, uh, Mr. Johnson about, uh, Dela Van Street, so asking the word for-
Who, who, uh, you said, Mr. Johnson, or Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, uh, Mr. Jones to speak up to the Super, Board Education Superintendent, if he can speak with him about where we were discussing about closing Dela Van Street off, due to where, wow, I mean, you had another close call, that's where the crossing guards are the witness of, due to where, like I said, if she's crossing one this way and running across Dela Van, I meant, whoa, maybe she can speak to you, but I think it's time for someone to speak up, the police department, the crossing guards are doing their part, but now I think it's time for the Board of Education to stand up and continue doing what they were, that was where they had it blocked off, where you, it was safe, that's where you have the kids come from Livingston School, run across the Red Shaw School, and I remind you, wow, the situation where the little girl got hit by the bike, which created damage, even though it was a bicycle last year, so please, I hope you can, uh, I know you're very good at speaking up about it, you can speak to the superintendent about putting the cones back on Dela Van Street, please?
Got it.
Thank, thank you, and then, uh, another thing I'm, I'm looking, I want to ask, this is with the fire department or the inspection, that's where, uh, on the corner of, uh, I forget the number, the name of campus, Harvey Street and Somerset Street, that's where you have, it's just one side of Senior Citizen Building, and the other side is, uh, Low Income, but they're right beside each other, that's where, uh, that was where it was a small fire there, Fri- Friday?
That's here.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna say the exact date, but I know it was last week, it was where it was a fire there, that was where, uh, it was brought to my attention from, from a few people to speak about it, due to where, how, like I said, for senior citizens, you're disabled, how they never got warned about what, okay, you have a fire on this floor, how soon would the message get to the, the next person if they have to evacuate, or there's no type of system to alert everybody what's going on, what, you run to every door to say, okay, this is a fire going on, that's where, cause you did have a, a bad one in the other- That's where, because you did have a bad one in the other building also as well. So yes, it's a big concern to to senior citizens in that building. So is it something I I I know that the fire department, where they did a very good job with putting the uh the black box in there with the security code. So that wasn't a problem, but I'm wondering, is it something that the fire department can do to alert?
Mr. Fire, right there.
Yes, sir. If if any fires out of these, especially in that multifamily dwelling, it's not a need for evacuation. Sometime we uh secure people in place, it's safer for them and it makes our job easier doing what we have to do. Keeps the stairways open so we can take care of the fire and the emergency. So that's the call that the deputy chief makes, if that's saying if evacuation is necessary or not.
Thank you.
I know the senior citizens, those are seniors, so you ain't gonna try to usher them out of the building unless it's absolutely necessary.
Well, okay, for instance, like I said, say, say, was was necessary, a small situation, what, say someone's in a wheelchair, what, like I said, what are you gonna do? What, is there some way that, what, you can, God forbid, you do have a big one, but what would you be able to do?
Those buildings have multiple stairways. We use one stairway for firefighting and the other stairway for evacuation.
So rest of the area is a plan, yes, there's a plan.
I I still don't think that, I I'm getting you to un- understand me. I'm saying, for for instance, okay, say you have a a fire here. Okay, and then what, if if there's some way that you're gonna warn somebody, if you if you if you do have to evacuate, for instance, say someone is in a wheelchair, can't get up and some, what are you, how are you gonna like let them know ahead of the time?
We know ahead of time what apartments have people that are mobile, just like we know over in the courthouse if something's happened. What floors people on that are mobile. So we know who to target, to assist to get out. And the alarms notify notify the other people in the building to evacuate.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I understand your on that, thank you. I will give the message back to the ones that have concerns about you.
Tell them to call our office.
Huh? Oh, oh, okay, like I said, I know you meant it for me, but you gave them that.
We extended, we extended.
Okay, last one, I will say, give to this, a compliment to the city of New Brunswick, the uh cleaning, I know normally cleaning is cleaning is, no, no, I mean, I'm very, I'm very surprised and I will give them an A plus on this. I know that uh street cleaning is over in October, but I will give them 100% where, wow, today was a wonderful, I mean, excellent street cleaning what they really did with the area, all all over. Harps, city garbage cans, street cleaning, I give them an A plus on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Audrey Pittman. I live in the city of New Brunswick. This has been an ongoing battle situation. Um, there was an incident on September twenty-fourth sixteen where I called the police department to have a vehicle removed from a handicap spot in front of where I live. Anyway, the way that the officer addressed me and talked to me was very disrespectful. And the main reason why I'm here today is because I want an apology from that officer. Maybe he was having a bad day, I don't know. But it was very unacceptable, the way that he presented himself. And it didn't say much to the New Brunswick Police Department. I got a letter from Internal Affairs that I had made a, had, I had a complaint made. Um, but it says that everything that he did, he did in accordance to the rules, regulations or whatever. So what it's saying is, is it okay for him to go around and talk to people however that they want and he be excused from it? I don't think so. I'm a senior citizen. I've lived in New Brunswick for seventy years and I I just, I just don't appreciate that. And I am looking for an apology. I mean, all he has to do is write on a piece of paper, I'm sorry. I just say, you know, I'm sorry, whatever. You know, it's having a bad day or whatever, but to me, it's unacceptable. And I don't feel as though that anyone on this council would like to be spoken to the way that he talked to me. So I want to know, you know, what can you do about it?
We, uh Captain Miller, I'm just gonna say that. I'm sorry that you had to go through this situation. I mean, we, pardon, I can't speak for the officers, I don't know one way or the other, you know, but I'm sorry that it's taken this long since September and I don't know if I can speak for everybody, but I'm I'm sorry that you did go through this situation. I can, Captain Miller, I'm on the spot.
So when the situation was brought up, actually September, Internal Affairs investigation was conducted immediately. I know there's been talk about the mayor's office and stuff, but that's aside. The police department did their investigation. Um, Ms. Pittman is entitled to her opinion. The investigation showed that there was no wrongdoing on the part of the officer, so Mrs. Pittman has, Ms. Pittman has her opinion. Um, Internal Affairs has their opinion of what happened. Um, it's two different sides of the story. I'll relay Ms. Pittman's request to the police director, um requesting apology. Do not know which way that will go. But again, Ms. Pittman has her opinion, Internal Affairs has theirs and.
Internal Affairs was in there, so. You have a opinion, Ms. Pittman?
That's all I can say about that.
So, so you're still saying that it's okay for him to just speak to people the way that he wants?
No, we're not, um, like I said, go ahead.
No, I just want to say that that um eh, thank you for coming.
I mean, the situation, he handled the situation, but the way that he approached and talked to me, that was, to me, that's unacceptable. I I had incidents with, uh, not incidents, but other police officers. I had an incident not too long ago in my parking with the um Lieutenant Johnson. Very malleable, he did everything that he can, could, and solved the situation. But this guy, he had a very, very nasty attitude, very nasty. And it was my first time doing something like that. So when he pulled up, I sat and I waited. I said, well, he's not going to get out the car. I didn't know. So I got out of my car and I went back to the truck. And he says, yeah, what's up? So it's stunning. And I said, huh, what's up? So I said, I was so shocked, I was pointing to the the car. What about it? I said, can you get it moved? I said that it's, you know, he's in my my uh handicap spot. Where's your car? I said, my car is parked in front of that one. I said, and um he says, well, is your, is your car registered today? I said, yes, you can look at the handicap, the number on the handicap hand tag. Well, well, I'm gonna do my job. That's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do my job. I was just stunned. So what I did was I tried to reach out to several people to see what I could do to for someone to, you know, correct this officer's attitude or just tell him my feelings about it. And, you know, one thing just led to another. And I still say that I don't feel as though I was spoken to properly and I do want an apology.
Hey, go ahead.
No, that was maybe my question, why did, why did the officer, eh, you answer it before I even had a chance to?
We can, like I said, we can, I said, since this situation occurred, I mean.
And if you want to see the letter, then I got from Internal Affairs. I have it here, you can read it if you want.
Okay, we can, we can take that under advisement. We will, we'll take a look at it. I mean, we we discussed this previously outside of, you know, we knew it went through different channels and things like that. I mean, the most we can do is have a dialogue and, you know, it's hard to like implore somebody to point A to point B, you know, something, if a if a law was clearly broken, you know what I'm saying, where we can deal with the law, but we have to deal with X and stuff like that. But we can have a dialogue to see where it goes from there. But I'm not just trying to run it on the black hole, you know, just trying to run you in a circle.
Because the way that he was talking and I did that type of person, it could have really escalated into something worse than that.
Yes.
But, you know, I was just shocked and I just like backed away. And the the other officer that was riding with him, the driver did all the talking. The other officer that was riding with him, he said nothing. It was like, the expression on his face was like, he was shocked. You know, he was looking at me to see what I was gonna say. I literally couldn't say anything because I was just totally shocked, I really was. So I appreciate if you would do something. And as I still say, I'm looking for an apology. I really am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So about having a senior student, real quick, um about the McDonald's situation, um the lady found, responded, uh, the McDonald's, they said, allegedly two officers didn't respond. He said he was gonna call me, he never called me.
Captain Miller. He had a. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good night, I called you at 2:00 P.M. yesterday, you're going to rate your voicemail, I left you a voicemail. And council has a complete report on it.
What's the report?
Without naming names, I think we can.
Okay, from our understanding, they're um.
Are they handled?
Yeah, I think. Captain probably better achieve it to address it, because he's the one that conducted the.
Okay, we'll have Captain Miller.
Since the allegation, I guess myself, I did not do the investigation, I handed it off to another commander of the police department who had nothing to do with the incident involved. An unresponsive female who overdosed the McDonald's. Um, it was myself and another officer who was on an extratourary assignment within that area, um involved shutting down Route twenty-seven for a construction site. Uh, we are being paid by the contractors who are doing the work, which is public service, electric engagement. Um, the New Brunswick Police Department's policies and procedures clearly state that an officer assigned to an off-duty post cannot leave the post without express permission of the road supervisor. Sergeant Maurice Vinnie was the road supervisor that evening. Um, he was interviewed and he's indicated that, one, the response time was excellent and the cat backs that up, there was no delay and the officer responding, and he indicated that there was no need to take anyone off an extratourary assignment um to respond to that call.
So you're telling me if there was a code five, that officer wouldn't respond?
I didn't question.
What's code five? A code five is when the officer's in distress or in trouble. And he, he records that. Let me tell you, those two officers wouldn't.
But let me.
This is not a code five situation.
Huh?
This is not a code five situation.
It was a bandwagon, with those officers assisting.
But I think that would be, all right. Let me just give an analogy now that Captain Miller.
Forget about it. We don't even blame, we don't even gotta go any further.
Okay.
We already know.
No, you don't hear, do you want to hear?
I mean, if you don't accept greatness from your captains, I can imagine what you accept from your regular patrolmen. These are two captains that allow a lady, a female, who has a, who has a police, who is a a a a, who has police officers in her family? They found a police uh plaque in her pocket from Tom River. So she is a, she has law enforcement in her family. These two officers who are getting money, they are, they already got a decent salary. They already got a decent salary. Now they're working another side job. Can that money go to an officer that's in the forty or fifty thousand dollar range, not the six-figure range? How greedy are these officers? That they gotta get money, he's off, he's in, he's in charge of internal affairs. He's the captain of the police department and he works side, how many other titles do he have? For one person?
Two more titles.
Four?
Two more titles.
Two more, two, 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 with the six titles that he's bragging on, and he's working a side job also.
Mr. Pittman, is it salar-, which one is it? Is it the salary or is it the?
It's far above, it's the neglect.
Okay.
And it's the, and you know what it is? It's to support corrupt policing and ineffective policing. And you see the leadership of two captains that are sitting in a car. I don't care if if he was off duty, he's obligated to respond. That's why a police officer, even while he's off duty, he's required to keep his walk, his radio and his gun on him if he's off, if he's a New Brunner. He's a New Brunswick police officer. He's required to have his radio on him and his gun, if I'm not mistaken. And if, and you know what, the reason that he's required to have his radio and his gun to respond to a situation like this. So you mean to tell me he's on duty to an extent and he's not allowed to respond, but if he's off duty, he's required to respond? Any officer that's a New Brunner, if you see him nightclubbing out where they are, they have their radio and their gun. And you're trying to tell me that he's not supposed to respond to a call of someone overdosing twenty-five feet away from you? Twenty-five feet away from him? My aunt told me to be nice, but I apologize, wish she had, I hope she loved it.
I just, I may have a lady, it was not twenty-five feet, that's.
Thirty-five.
Secondly, a police officer off duty is not required to carry the radio. They are required to carry their firearm. Um, and if.
What's the purpose of that, required, why, why is he required to carry his firearm?
If I'm gonna be interrupted, I am not gonna speak any further.
Can we go?
Why, why is he required to carry his firearm? All right, go ahead.
As I said before, Route twenty-seven was closed and rape, lane shifted. If officers were to leave that, the the potential for vehicular accidents and catastrophe would be huge. It's a large job that also encompasses Franklin officers as well in New Brunswick, you know, taking a large stretch of Route twenty-seven. To leave that uh post for um when a regular patrol officer responding expeditiously would, you know, could be catastrophic. And that's all I'm saying about that.
This young lady just came up here and told she had concerns about people overdosing.
Yes.
It it it.
Okay.
Hold it, let me.
Go ahead, go ahead, hold me.
Let me speak.
Okay.
She just complained about people overdosing. I didn't listen, somebody contacted me. I can't make this stuff up. I know we got harmful police officers. I I know, you know, my job is just to come here and prove it. And I just proved that now you got two captains, twenty, he says, I say twenty-five, he say forty feet away. But you have four, two officers forty feet away hearing that a young lady is overdosing in a bathroom and they waited for other officers to respond. In my nature, as a regular civilian, I couldn't sit there and do that. As a regular person, it would have been inhumane for me to sit there and notice somebody is dying or suffering and could possibly die and I sit in a squad car probably looking at my cellphone. I couldn't do it. And I, and I don't respect anybody that condones any person that could do that. We don't even gotta go any further. Um, I'm a little upset because, you know, uh, you know, my aunt, I had no idea she was coming here. I honestly didn't. And the only way, you know, when I normally come and I look at the crowd and I seen her, it was a total shock to me that she was here. And, you know, she told me to be nice, but it's hard because you guys are human with her. You gotta sit there like, I've been coming here, it's a hundred and thirteen days, where she was asking for a response, I've been asking for a response on her behalf. And the information that you got was a lie. I hope, because she didn't tell me that she didn't, she didn't want anyone to speak on her behalf. She she, she wanted, she want, whether she wants me to know, I'm gonna represent her. And it bothered me that you found some information to bring back to the council saying that it was a rumor, tells me a lot about your character.
It's not a rumor, it was somebody, he was told to.
She didn't say it. A lot of things were told you, but I, I know you found that person to come there. And the reason why I think that it was important for you to say that, because I honestly, I don't know if you have anything against all black people, but I don't think you like black women at all. I honestly don't. I think you have something against black women. I think we, I think you're intimidated by them. And I think, and this is not the first time I heard this about you. I think you're intimidated by them, I think you got a kick out of my, I'm being disrespected by the police officers. And I also think you got a kick out of Charlie Gay and being called a nigger. I think that should count. I know a little more than you think I know. I know a little more than you think I know. I I know a little more than you think I know. And this, I'm gonna finish with this.
I challenge you, I challenge you to look and see, you know, to to.
I'm gonna end it with this.
Whatever you're saying, I challenge you to bring it forward and see if it's true.
I'm gonna end it with this. Bring proof.
End it with that.
Bring proof.
Oh, what are you saying about me?
Bring, okay. What I do is, I'll, I'll do, I'll bring you all the memes when you were the president and you knew that she was called a nigger and disrespected and you said, I am. That's proof enough. Let me, let me end with this, let me end with this. Let me finish. I got a whole year with you guys, just let me finish. My concern is you, bro. Seriously. My concern is you, you're in the seat now. Everybody that got the hot seat, everybody got in that seat, got the hot seat for me.
Okay.
And one thing I respect about Councilmember Seane is he didn't play, switch the, uh, pass the potato, switch, they didn't, he didn't play hot seat. He stood there and tipped it. Whenever it got hot, he didn't switch over. And with you, you know, I explained to you last time that the concerns I had with you. And I'll tell you how I met you and how I got to know you. Probably before the meeting in Ebenezer, right? Jimmy Cook was councilman, was a councilman.
Yes.
He was a councilman, right? And him and the mayor conducted a meeting. And he, and and they were supposed to have community forums because of the Richard Row incident, the eighty-one complaints. Him and the mayor conducted their first meeting and Jimmy Cook disrespected a young man named Jason Teller. He disrespected him, yelled, and bursted out because of about three hundred people, you know, it was at the height of a very low situation. And he disrespected someone, he yelled and screamed at them in public and embarrassed them. But my problem with Jimmy Cook was. But my problem with Jimmy Cook was, he wouldn't yell, I, I couldn't see him yelling at a white person and that man over a black person. I wasn't there, but I, the next following meeting, I came. And me and Jimmy Cook got into a verbal altercation. I pretty much kinda, you could say I humiliated him. And after that, he never showed up to another council meeting. He played sick. That was the last time he ever sat on council. And I knew he wasn't sick, I knew he wasn't sick because my wife is his cousin, and we, I seen him at other family functions. So I'm speaking to a person, right? And this is what I, and this was the conversation, I said, listen, those devils are gonna have to, listen, this is exactly, I said, those devils are gonna make Jimmy come back to sit in that seat, because they, they can't have it like Tormel Pittman made him quit. Anybody who quit behind Tormel Pittman, they gotta fake like I, I wasn't responsible for it. So I said, listen, they're gonna make him come back. And the guy said, no, no, no. They got somebody else they've been grooming. And I said, who? He said Glenn Fleming.
They done groomed, they done groomed him?
Did, did, listen, this is the conversation. And that's, hold on, hold on, hold on, wait, 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 wait.
Okay, sir.
Wait, hold on, wait, let me finish that, let me finish the story. Let me finish the story. I didn't know you. So when, when we first, when, when you acted to meet with me for the first time, I told you who your father was.
Yeah.
That was an indication that, that, because this is the person, they told me who your father was, and they told me who your brother was.
Mm-hmm.
So I knew from the rip that you were being groomed into, into a certain position. Now that you're at that position, and I understand the critique you go through, and I understand, I, I don't know firsthand, but I know how they say they treat you behind closed doors. Right now, you have an opportunity. Right now, you have an opportunity to change your stance. And not go with this record, and I hope you don't corrupt this new council person. Because she looked like a nice, nice person. And, and she's outnumbered, and I hope you, I hope the guy, that you don't corrupt her, and I hope she has an independent mind and an indep- and an independent stance.
Thank you.
And last but not least, I'd like to give you a shout out, because I, you know, I seen him in urgent care. You know, we were both coughing. And one thing I respect, still, listen, oh, I, I, it was not wrong with me, I, I, I didn't medicate, I ain't a medicine guy, but they said I was okay, I just had a bad cough, my wife sent me to go, but. I respect the fact that when you ran into me, you didn't get shell-shocked. And you had a regular conversation, we didn't discuss none of this, and we didn't- Not like Egan right there, who was saying, he threw the whole police force under the bus, he's on. Not like that guy.
We got a whole year.
He had regular dialogue.
We got a whole year. Thank you.
Uh, my name's Erica, of Old Lord Five, and first like to thank these students and councilmen who take the time to listen to all the concerned residents. Um, I'm here today on behalf of a number of concerned residents in part made up by activists and GSS and the AMLU. Through charitable outreach to our homeless population, we've heard overwhelming consensus that the federal Code Blue program provides insufficient relief in the winter months those without shelter. Especially in the hard and fast twenty degrees Fahrenheit temperature cutoff does little to aid in many frigid nights and instances of inclement weather. We are here today to ask the city council to seriously look into allocating additional and useful resources to expanding and bolstering the current Code Blue program and taking pledge to help protect the city's homeless population.
Um, we, I have somebody here- I know my assistant's the judge. If that's alright, yes, okay.
So, so what is the question, sort of expanded or?
Um, we're just, we're just asking if there's any, because we've been helping run a food and clothing drive at the train station on Sundays. And we've been talking to people who come out and need aid. And one of their big concerns is that the Code Blue program as it stands uh, is set to provide warming stations when the temperature dips below twenty degrees Fahrenheit. However, um, many people without shelter feel that that federal cutoff of twenty degrees isn't sufficient for the needs to stay safe and healthy in the winter months. We're just curious if there's any way that City of New Brunswick can possibly allocate additional resources to expand that program and maybe provide shelter and warming stations when, let's say, the temperature's twenty-five degrees, but it's snowing out, or something like that.
Well, this, the city's program is a new program as of this year.
Okay.
Uh, we took over the program to, uh, relieve the largest promise of the duties, who are averaging about forty-five people a night during the Code Blue season. Uh, so we expanded it to three locations. We have three locations now under the city's program, which is the city hall basement, the Henry Guest House next to the public library, as well as the housing authority building on Van Dyke. So we're able to accommodate close to, if we had to use all three locations, anywhere between sixty, uh, eighty people. Uh, we just did four nights, uh, in a row, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, we've done, we've had six Code Blues already. Uh, we've had over fourteen guests. Uh, we've been seeing individuals from as far as Lambertville to South Orange to, uh, Scandaling, North Brunswick, Somerset, everywhere in between. Um, obviously, it's not a federal number. Uh, that legislation is still standing in committee. Uh, it's a city's number that we are, uh, we feel that is the best way to manage it, uh, at twenty percent. Yeah, twenty, twenty degrees. Uh, Middlesex County is known for a twenty-five degree, uh, temperature. There are some municipalities that go all the way down to fifteen degrees. Uh, so twenty degrees is the, the, I guess, the, uh, the best, uh, I guess, uh, temperature that you can manage.
And I, I just want it to be known that, you know, none of us are versed in the nuances of city legislation or anything like that. But we've been talking with the homeless community, and they're still, they're worried, especially with the homeless deaths in the winter last year. And they really do feel that twenty degrees Fahrenheit as a cutoff still puts them in danger. And I just want that to be known to everybody here, and I think that's it.
Excuse me once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Want to start by thanking Councilwoman Escobar for taking the time to meet with me about the housing authority. Um, I will send you the documents, I promised, and if anybody else from the council is interested, you can either ask me or Councilwoman Escobar to share those. Um, I, uh, want to ask about something, I, unfortunately, you're oh for one, you promised to get me some information before the next meeting, you didn't. Uh, Cesar Ovando, who is he replacing on the construction board?
Mr. Pollard.
Mr. Pollard?
Mr. Pollard is on the construction board. The order is Pollard, Pollard.
And Mr. Pollard resigned?
I just moved that to the city.
Okay. Um, uh, you know, it's good to keep those boards with a full complement of members. The ethics board does not have anybody on it. Is anybody making any moves to change that, or does, does not have the full comp-
It doesn't have the full-
It has four, four members, you need six. And, uh, when is that gonna happen?
It's the mayor's office, uh-
He's the one-
Yeah. It's a mayor's appointment, I believe.
Okay, um, the, uh, is it true Penrose, the company that owns that apartment building Ms. Moore was talking about, is it true that they sold the Skyline Tower and the George?
I'm not, I'm not privy to that information.
Could you ask, is it playing the economic development director, has both of these projects have gotten, uh, incentives from the city?
Yes, they sold them.
Yes.
Do you know the price? How many millions dollars these buildings are worth, considering?
No. I would imagine that the public record, if it was a deed filed.
I've been trying to get it from the county, and it still has not been filed, I guess, so.
The county's behind that.
I'm shocked. Um, okay, the water utility, so the water utility used to, at some point, offer tours to members of the public. I know at one point the environmental commission invited members of the public to join, uh, for a tour, and I know Mr. Marash was planning to have some public tours before his abrupt departure. I just wanted to ask, have there been any tours conducted? Can I get a tour of the water utility?
Has there been any tours of the water utility?
Not that I recall, I don't know, Mr. Latin, I don't have a different answer, but I don't, I don't recall.
But I, I, I want to preface a response first, if I can, as the council president. Um, if there were tours, um, I would be concerned about Mr. Cradaville being granted one because, um, as of Friday, I received a letter actually stored yesterday, um, where Mr. Cradaville is threatening litigation against the City of New Brunswick through his council regarding the water utility, the meter situation, and, uh, some things, uh, that he alleges to his council. Quite frankly, when there's threatened litigation, certainly we don't discuss these things, nor, nor do we provide access to information or documentation that may assist in threatened litigation. So, um, I'm just putting that out there, I think Mr. Cradaville's smart enough to know what I'm talking about. And I don't want, um, that to be discussed here in public or implied because of the threatened litigation by your attorneys.
Well, it's interesting, someone talked about it, you just brought it up.
Yeah. I hope, unfortunately, at this time.
I can't get a tour. How about the other fifty thousand residents in the city, or any of the people who have to direct the water that that plant produces? Can you pause right now?
I don't believe there's tours being offered. Uh, you know, it's not a museum, I, I, I-
Yes.
We've brought students into the water utility, uh, students with the public school district. They've come and seen it, um, not too many, maybe a small handful of them. We haven't received any requests, though, for a public tour, sadly.
So they haven't, oh, gone and requested a tour?
Not really, no. But we, we brought, we brought some young people in to see it.
Okay.
I think when I was in, uh, Grand River, I had a tour. A couple groups put in, that was before. Yeah, that was before the unfortunate incident at Newark, so. I'm not too sure about whether or not it's that free to be open.
I understand, I just recall talk at environmental commission beings of tours being offered, and, and I was invited at one point, I regret that I didn't go. Because apparently now, I'm not welcome. Now, uh, I, I've said that there should be a public meeting held about the problems with the water. And I know that Rutgers Village has experienced a lot of problems with its water, specifically the, the main breaks, the two major main breaks, one in September, one in December. And I know that there's also been TTHM violations and all kinds of other, uh, uh, problems that have been spreading, uh, around town, and people are concerned. And I think having a public meeting would be a great way. And I know you, sir, are a Rutgers Village resident, I know another member of the council is a Rutgers Village resident. Um, would you be, would you be willing to have the city be involved in organizing a, a meeting? Uh, to, to, to have some truth exposed about the water utility?
We can't discuss the water.
We're not gonna talk anything about the water.
I'm sorry, because I, because my, because a lawyer wrote a letter to you from me, you're not gonna talk about the water at all?
No, I'm sure.
And you're not gonna organize a public meeting for the residents of Rutgers Village who are getting yellow water out of their closets instead of-
Just not, just venue.
So you won't, you won't, you won't have a public meeting?
So I'm not going to say anything about the water.
Okay, I'll organize the public meeting then, it's very simple, we'll just do it that way. Um, do you have any response to, uh, Rutgers University, uh, being accused of wage theft? I know you passed ordinance against it.
I haven't seen, uh, just this-
I'll send you the report.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, will you, will you respond to emails?
I'll give it the attention that it deserves.
By phone line?
I will give it the attention that it deserves.
Okay, that tells me probably not, you know, that-
Why? I just told you, I said, I will give it the attention that it deserves.
Okay.
Don't think so, low, then, don't.
I hope you'll respond to it. Um, okay, so New Brunswick Police Department keeps saying that they, uh, believe body cameras are a good thing, they want to get body cameras. Can you tell me, did they apply for the latest chunk of grant money from the HHS office that just got announced?
Captain, no.
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 Why not?
Because there's a lot of grabbers and grants that will not work for us right now. Specifically money, the amount of money that's available, and what it costs to outfit the police department. It's a lot more, and we discussed this at another meeting, I know, it's a lot more than just the camera that's mounted to your shirt, there's a host of logistical concerns, the storage, and, um, retention, and be able to bring it back up again upon request. Um, that's the bulk of the money, and the grant doesn't cover that.
Uh, yeah, I recall the conversation, I just want to know, if the city believes they're a good thing, when are you, when is, when is that gonna change? When is there, is there a plan, a timeframe to, to implement this technology that the police believe is gonna help?
Captain, no.
We do not have an exact timeframe.
We don't have a timeframe.
Okay, well, I, I certainly hope that, uh, we don't wait until somebody loses their life again. I, I, I think that if the police believe it's gonna help, it should be a priority. And I don't know why it wasn't a priority last year, I don't know why you're not applying for the grant money, because some money's better than no money to start. Um, and I, I don't think it's a, it's a, you know, I hope the police are truly serious about it. Um, can Captain please comment on, if there's a, we talked about trends before, I know he's the internal affairs commander, are there any trends you noticed